Tim feeling lonely down there by himself?
Yeah.
Good evening and welcome to the December 15, 2021 Regular City Council Meeting. I am Mayor Nathan Box and I would like to call the meeting to order. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Byrd Vreeman.
Vreeman?
Vreeman, I thought you said Raymond here.
Peters Corbin.
Here.
Coronado Arnshorst.
Here.
Hookstra.
Here.
Raymond.
Here.
Mayor Box.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Wonderful, thank you. We're going to start this evening's meeting as we have for many years, first with an opening prayer this evening led by Councilmember Vreeman, immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we would invite you to join us.
Let's pray together. Lord Jesus, we come before you this evening at the close of many of our days, and we thank you for it. We'd ask now that you would grant to each one of us clear minds and thinking as we engage in this city council meeting. And we would put it before you that you would give us wisdom and discernment as we would assist in the leadership of this city. We thank you for its citizens and all that serve it so well. And we'd ask that you would make yourself known as provider and sustainer in this holiday season as we spend extra time away from one another and more time with our friends and family. We would intercede for those that are lonely or by themselves in this season, and we'd ask that you would spark hospitality and generosity to our citizens that they might engage with those that are unfamiliar to them. And now we would put our meeting before you, that you might grant to us wisdom, that you might give us discernment, and would you increase joy in the midst of it? We put now this time before you, that you'd be honored and that you would be pleased, and it's by your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item are our consent agenda items. The items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be fairly routine. They've been reviewed by council members as part of our packet, and they will be enacted with one motion unless a member of the audience or a member of the council asks to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed in its regular order on the regular agenda. But before I ask that, Kathy, would you please review the consent agenda for us?
Item 4A, absence excused, councilmembers Byrd, Peters, and Coronado. 4B, approval of minutes, December 1, 2021 Regular Meeting and December 8, 2021 Study Session. 4C, Osevossis. 4D, written petitions and communications, tax abatement, PA 198 Hudsonville Creamery and Ice Cream, 345 East 48th. 4E, written petitions and communications, tax abatement, PA 198 MG 88 Holland Cold Storage LLC, 1870 Transport Lane. 4F, Board of Public Works, update non-rate fees and charges. 4G, City Clerk, claim filed against the city. 4H, City Clerk, charitable gaming license, adopt resolution. 4I, Transportation Services, traffic changes. 4J, Transportation Services, accept dedication of Main Street Right-Away and adopt resolution adding Main Street to the city's Act 51 Street System. 4K, Community Neighborhood Services, award bid for consulting services, non-motorized transportation plan. 4L, Finance Department, city budget fiscal year 2022 mid-year adjustments. 4M, Public Safety Police Services, intersection cameras. 4N, Management Administrative Services, Washington Square Business Improvement District Board of Directors' Appointments. 4O, Management Administrative Services, South Shore Village Business Improvement District Board of Directors' Appointments.
Great, thank you Kathy. Is there any member of the audience that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none, is there any member of council who would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none here either, what is the pleasure of council in regard to the consent agenda items?
Will we approve?
Moved by Hookstra, is there support?
Support.
Support by Vreeman, any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Vreeman.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Arnshorst.
Yes.
Hookstra.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you very much. Next item, item number five, is our public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act of the state of Michigan, we allow for a public comment period at every one of our public meetings. During regular city council meetings, we allow for five minutes. You may speak to council on any item that you would like to that does not already have a public hearing assigned to it as part of our regular agenda. We please recognize that this is one-way communication. This is an opportunity for you to communicate to council, but we do not engage in conversation or discussion or answer questions during that period. However, if there's a question perhaps for staff, they may be able to get back to you at a later date. Please note that there are three lights on the dais in front of me. There's a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. Our city manager will be keeping track of the time. While the green light's on, you're doing well on time. When the red light or yellow light's on, you have one minute left, and the red light means that your time has expired, and we are very strict about that. So having said that, I'd like to invite anyone to the podium who would like to speak, just please give us your name and your address for the record. Is there anyone who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Pastor Willie Watt from 426 Century Lane. Once again, my name is Pastor Willie Watt. I'm from, I'm the creator and founder and former executive director of Escape Ministries, also the pastor, creator, and founder of Lifeline, executive director of Lifeline Ministries here in Holland, established in 2020. I'm here, I am today because at one time I was called by the city of Holland to help with the gang problem, and I have a proclamation that shows the work that I have done over the years, even in 2013, dropping the juvenile crime rate by 76% at that time. If you notice that there's no graffitis on the walls or anywhere in Holland, it's because I myself put two individuals that did that through college, and now they're design artists for major companies right now. I'm calling on the city to, right now I'm speaking for the unseen and the unknown and the voiceless in this town of the homeless people, the 207 individuals that are sleeping in the woods in this community right now. I'm here to ask the city for assistance in a conversation on how we can tackle the homelessness in this community. First, understanding that there's two different types of homelessness in this community. There is homelessness or individuals don't have jobs, they're sleeping in the woods, and some of them are major, under major addiction or mental illness. Then there's the displaced. Those individuals are working, they're living in hotels. Over 287 families live in hotels in Holland right now. Now, when we talk about housing, we're always talking about housing for individuals in this community, but even the people in the hotels cannot afford the housing that is even being put up because of the fact that they have been evicted or have a criminal record. So if the people in the hotels that's making, that's paying $1,200 to $1,500 a month in rent and hotel fees, how in the world are they going to be able to pay for a $45,000 one- or two-bedroom apartment that wants first month's rent, last month's rent, and deposit? There's no way. So if you can't take care of the people in the hotels, how are we ever going to talk about taking care of the people that's in the basement? That is the homeless that's in the streets right now. There is no organization, no company, or no place where providing housing or any type for the homeless in this community. For the last, I've been working with homeless for over 16 years now, tackling the homeless situation here, and just last year, I put 64 people that was living on the streets into housing and into hotels to provide them jobs, free rehab, and also providing, looking for housing, which is buying mobile homes and things like that for individuals. It does work when we put people in one place to help all that we can. Right now, we getting instructed that there's no place in Holland to put people because the variances and ordinances and zoning and things like that, but that keeps us from helping the individuals we said, we talk about, we want to do. Sir, you opened up the meeting with a prayer, and you talk about hospitality. So where's the hospitality that's Holland given to the individuals that's in the woods? So most of you might be thinking right now, well, we have the mission. But what you really don't want to remember or understand is that you have to be a resident of this community to be able to go to the mission. If you're not a resident, you only get three days stay. If you are a resident, you get 14 days stay. If you don't go for the program, or you get kicked out of the program, or if you finish the program, you're still not guaranteed housing. So there's a difference, there's a reason why there's more than one organization that should be dealing with homelessness in this community. And Lifeline has an idea. If you will work with us and listen to us and talk to us about just providing temporary ordinance of various or zoning changing, so we could put people in one place so we can give them jobs, free rehab, housing that's safe in a safe environment, to then get them back on their feet. We're looking at giving people a hand up, not a handout. And we have proven that it has worked in this community. We have 31 huts that's built right now for people to go in, and we're looking at building 150 if we're granted a place or a space to be able to put these.
Mr. Mayor, that's five minutes. Thank you, Mr. Watt.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Yes, please come forward, sir.
Thank you.
Yep, and would you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Rick Barman, and my address is 5886 139th Avenue, 49423. So my involvement began last March when I heard that there was regularly a vehicle parked along the highway, someone going in and out of the woods, and that there was a group of tents there. And a friend of mine that works with us checked with his son who's on the HPD, and he said, yeah, those people are there, they're homeless, and that's Mark who's bringing them a hot meal every day. And so I, as soon as I was done with work that day, I drove there and hiked in there and introduced myself to Mark and got to know him a little bit, and come to find out that Mark and Willie are working together. And so I began just reaching out to different organizations in my business, in the printing business. I work with a lot of them already, and I know a lot of who they are and what they do, and started reaching out to various businesses, Building Men for Life and Holland Rescue Mission, and meeting with different people in different churches and finding out what, as much as I could, about who was doing what. And I began to find out that the people that were truly living out on the streets or in the woods or in tents are being referred to Pastor Willie. And so I've been involved on a committee with him and a few others, and we've been exploring options. And as you mentioned, we have these huts that are built and ready to use with no place to go right now, but they would be a big step above the tents that the people are living in right now for many of them. And if they were, if they were able to be in a specific area where they could be taken care of and mentored and accountability and transportation to jobs, I have several contacts that are willing to help with the transportation, churches and radio stations that have buses, and there, lots of people are ready to get involved, roll up their sleeves and help get people the jobs and transportation, and we're finding that there's a lot of food available. It's just a matter of getting these people somewhere where they can be served, and they can have what they need just to get a hand up and get back on their feet to where they can take their next step. And, you know, if you'll spend some time talking with Pastor Willie, you'll get to hear some of the stories of some of the people that he's been able to help, and it's really inspired me. It's something that I have a hard time getting out of my mind because I see them out there living outside, and it really bothers me. It's a solution that I'd really like to see taken care of very soon. I know they were outside last winter, and they're looking at being outside again this winter, unless we come up with a place, a location that we can, we can have them at and put them in something a little, that's a pretty big step up from tents, and make it easier to take care of these people. So many of them are getting hot meals delivered to them right now because various people know where many of them are, but it's hard to meet all their needs in that environment when they're spread all over. So, yeah, I would really, really see the need and would appreciate a hearing about this matter and so we could do what we can with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barman. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Good evening, Mr. Zylestra, would you please state your name and address for the record?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Doug Zylestra, 152 East 24th Street. I am the Ottawa County Commissioner for the City of Holland. Just want to give a COVID update real quick. Last time I was here indicated we hadn't fully turned the corner on the Delta quite yet. Unfortunately, we still have not turned the corner on the Delta, and now we face potential threat of a new Omicron wave. So just want to go with the numbers real quick. Positivity in Ottawa County increased to 26.4, which is one of the highest levels of the pandemic. Our goal was to be less than eight. Weekly case counts in Ottawa increased 42% from 1,573 two weeks ago to 2,241 last week, which is the highest weekly case count of the pandemic. Cases among children increased 34% from 341 two weeks ago to 456 this week. Area hospitals are likewise, you know, I think you've all read that, experiencing high levels of COVID-19 patients. 36% of all beds and 70% of all ICU beds are occupied by COVID patients. The new COVID-19 variant Omicron was detected in Michigan this past week. With so much unknown about it, it is more important than ever to maintain prevention strategies such as getting vaccinated, staying home if you're sick, getting tested, and masking indoor where appropriate. In addition, the Health Department is recommending that everyone 16 years of age or older get a booster shot. They're available at healthcare providers, local pharmacies, and at Vaccinate Michigan, westmichigan.com. For children's vaccine clinics, there's a couple clinics this week. One is at Community Action House Food Club at 739 Paw Paw Drive, and at Salvation Army at 104 Clover Street here in Holland. Talked a little bit about the mandate in the past. Obviously, it's been a bit of an issue with Ottawa County residents on both sides. It is set to expire for most schools at the end of classes this week. My understanding is a number of school districts will be maintaining some sort of mask mandate, but if your school does not, the Health Department is encouraging voluntary wearing of masks in the educational setting. Quick word on the Ottawa County American Rescue Plan process, and I think we've talked about it a little bit before. We've received 57 million, or are receiving 57 million in ARP rescue funds. Yesterday, the board passed three different aspects. We approved the lenses for project evaluation, bucket areas, and the project selection process. We talked about five buckets at the county level. First one is business stabilization needs, social and human service needs, affordable housing needs, county broadband needs, and county operation needs. Our next steps is to begin the application process for bucket managers. It's anticipated that each of the three community buckets will have a fund manager, so we'll be sending out requests or qualifications to entities that can serve as bucket managers. Yesterday, the board didn't vote strict dollar amounts for each of the five buckets, but it is my hope that as the process unfolds, we will be able to receive and process quality applications from the three bucket, the three community buckets, and eventually push the vast majority of our ARP resources into those three buckets. I did want to talk briefly about one resignation that we received from Bob Hamilton, who is a city of Holland resident. He is our first and only public defender, has been leading up the Public Defense Department for the last three years. So he'll be leaving in January, and we'll be missing him. Bob's been a great force in getting that department going, so that's all I have today, but if you have any questions, please reach out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zylestra. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item on our agenda, item number six, special presentations and recognitions from the mayor or council or city manager. And this evening, I have a proclamation in regard to Lupita Reyes. It's one of the joys of being mayor is I get to highlight shining stars in the community, and tonight is definitely one of those evenings. I'd like to read the proclamation for Lupita. Whereas, on December 31, 2021, Lupita Reyes will retire after more than 57 years hosting Holland's first Spanish-language radio show, Alegria Latina, at WHTC AM/FM Studios on Central Avenue in Holland. And whereas, over 57 years ago, Lupita Reyes approached Bill Gargano, the station manager at WHTC AM/FM, about creating a Spanish-language show to serve Holland's growing Latino community. Gargano agreed with the requirement that Ms. Reyes host the show. And whereas, in looking back on his discussion with Lupita Reyes, what to call the show, Mr. Gargano, now 97, remembers he said to Ms. Reyes, "Let's give it a name." And he asked her, "How are you most of the time?" And her response was, "I'm happy most of the time." So the name Alegria Latina was her idea. Alegria means happy in Spanish. And whereas, the show has expanded from a bare half-hour Saturday show to a Sunday evening powerhouse with a cadre of co-hosts airing from 7:00 PM to midnight Sundays on 92.7 The Van, WHTC's sibling station. The show features mariachi banda, Tejano, Balhada, and rancheras music, interviews, news, and calls from fans listening online across the US and a few Spanish-speaking countries. And whereas, a Texas native, Lupita Reyes moved to Holland with her parents in 1945. Her remarkable story includes being placed in a class with developmentally-delayed students because she didn't speak English, to graduating from Grand Valley State University with a degree in social work, earning her master's in social work from Western Michigan University, and another master's degree in business administration and management from Aquinas College. She worked as a clinical supervisor for patients and family counseling at Holland Hospital before opening her own counseling business in 2013. And whereas, Lupita Reyes has been a groundbreaking and influential leader in Holland, founding multiple organizations, leading the drive to create Latin Americans United for Progress in 1964, the annual fiesta, helping form Community Action House in 1969, and Holland Community Health Center in 1995, among other groups. And she has earned multiple honors, including the 2018 Hispanic-Latino Commissioner of Michigan's Top 50 Women Award. And whereas, her last show was scheduled for this week, December 12, 2021, Lupita Reyes will leave Alegria Latina feeling proud of the program's accomplishments, its contributions to the community, and all of the fans. Now therefore, I, Nathan Box, Mayor of the City of Holland, Michigan, and members of the Holland City Council proclaim that the City of Holland will observe December 31, 2021, as a day to celebrate Alegria Latina founder Lupita Reyes's 57-plus years with WHTC. For the many contributions that Lupita Reyes has made to the City of Holland community throughout her work at WHTC, her legacy is not just in radio, but in helping create multiple organizations in the greater Holland area. Given under my hand and the seal of the City of Holland this 15th day of December 2021, Mayor Nathan Box. Congratulations, Lupita.
Yes, please do, please do.
You give me the mic and remember, I'm, oh, okay, okay, five minutes.
You don't get until midnight.
All right. I just want to thank the City of Holland, City Council, Mayor, for this recognition, but I want you to know that the recognition really goes to the community of Holland because it is this city that has made this possible throughout the 57 years I've been there. And also Midwest Communications, Kevin Oswald, and Peter from Wisconsin who's here this evening, and all the staff at WHTC, 92.7 FM, all of them have made it all possible. So I want to thank the community, and thank you, Mayor, for acknowledging me. But again, I always said, and this is the way I said goodnight, my last show, which was that last Sunday, I did it my way, and I'll keep doing it my way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda, item number seven, Special Order of the Day Public Hearings, PA 198 Tax Amendment, Sherlock Aluminum Edges. PA 198 tax amendment, Sherlock Aluminum Edging Incorporated for property located at 310 East 64th Street. Mr. Van Beek.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. And I'm going to do something that I think is kind. For those that are here for the Reyes family and the celebration, we are so glad you're here and congratulations. You're welcome to stay and hear about tax abatements and all those types of things. But you're fine if you leave now, too.
Yes, yeah. I think that's very kind of you. You're much kinder than I am. I was going to make them stay.
That's five minutes.
Yeah, we'll give you a moment.
Yeah, so we'll give a moment. We understand, right, you know, city managers and mayors and councils that we're fascinating business, but we know that that's not always necessarily so true to everyone. Well, thank you, Mayor, and again, Council. So tonight, we have two 198 tax abatements. And what I'm going to do, because a lot of you, you know the speech I'm about to give, and I'm going to give the speech just once, and then I'm going to introduce specific people for both of the projects to come forward. 198 tax abatements are a longstanding program that exists because it exists, it's state law. So we only can do things in this area that are state law. And then all of you are asked in this instance, and there's recommendations from staff, to take action on both of these 198s in front of you. The first one is more traditional along the lines of what we have, it seems like, you know, one every other month or so. And it's an abatement for a company, Sherlock Aluminum Edging, and I'll introduce them here momentarily, that is making in addition to property that, and a very successful business that they already have, in this case, a 20,000-square-foot addition with an additional employees that they're added that was outlined, and over a million-dollar investment. The speech that I always give is that 198s basically are something where I think a lot of times people think that they're getting all of their taxes forgiven, or if they hear that it's a $1.138 million tax abatement, that that's the value of the taxes. That's not the way it works. The way it works is that for up to 12 years, and that's the recommendation in this case, that additional value that they're adding to the company, they pay 50% of the taxes on that value, but they get an abatement for the other 50%. Thus, quite often, there's a calculation sheet in your packet, both for this project tonight and for all projects, where we talk about, you know, what exactly that tax break is. And sometimes, there's some math that goes on there. But roughly, my saying is, do you want 50% of something or 100% of nothing? And I always say that because with these 198s, we live in a competitive environment, and all municipalities have the ability to offer these 198s. And they're most typically given by other municipalities. So by participating in these 198s, staff is always recommending that we do those, particularly if they are good, solid employers paying good wages, because again, we'd like to have 50% of something instead of 100% of nothing. So with that, and you don't have to hear that speech one more time in a moment, we have Lynn McCammon, our finance director, who is always here. I'm not sure if she's going to add anything tonight or not. Greg King, who also always represents these projects for us from Lake Shore Advantage. But specifically, you may want to hear, and I'd like to introduce you to Roger Blaukamp, who is from Sherlock. So with that, come on forward. I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to meet Roger right before the meeting, but we're happy to have you here tonight.
And Mr. Blaukamp, we know your name, but we do need your address for the record as well, please.
My address is 4707 61st Street, Holland.
Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm the owner of Sherlock Aluminum Edging. We manufacture an aluminum edging product that's used for landscape edging to put around flower beds and trees, paperback walkways, and things like that. It's manufactured on an international, or sold on an international basis. We have a really good customer in Dubai and several others around the world. Started that business approximately about early part of 1990. It was in our tool and die shop, which is SDM manufacturing, and I've probably been here for 10 abatements for SDM through the years. And I think most of them are all expired now, where we pay the full amount of taxes at this point. But we sure appreciated the abatements that they did give us through the years because it is a huge help. We also manufacture professional landscape tools, which are shovels, rakes, brooms, wheelbarrows, tree dolly carts. We've got hammers and any type of a product that any landscaper would want to use. Those are primarily sold through landscape distributor businesses, not through big-box stores at all. And those are sold all through the United States as well as Canada. So we built our building four years ago. I had 10,000 extra square feet, which I thought would be way more than enough, but we're back here now, and we're adding 20,000 square foot on our building, and so we're asking for an abatement on that 20,000 square feet. We pay pretty good wages. We have people in our office, salespeople and things like that, are making as much as 75,000 to 80,000 a year. A lot of our factory help is anywhere from probably 16,000 up to about $28 an hour, usually plenty of overtime. So treat our employees well, and we keep growing, so we'd appreciate your consideration as a matter of any questions.
Great, yes, thank you. I was just going to ask council, any questions from council members? Lynn and then Dave. Did I... No, you didn't? Okay, Dave then.
Well, Mr. Blaukamp, I'm glad you're in a position to be able to do this expansion. It means things are going well for you, and I'm glad to hear that. And I'm not going to ask you the question I often ask folks when they come up here, because you just alluded to your pay scale. I often ask that question because these 198s are a bit of a give and take. Applicants are asking essentially the citizens of Holland to help them with their business, so we'd like to see what's in it for us, to be blunt. And so when companies do these expansions and they're able to add employees, I'd like to ask what the pay range is for that, because frankly, to offer an abatement to a situation that doesn't offer a livable wage, in my mind, is not a very good trade-off. But as you've stated, your pay scales are far beyond that, and I'm glad to hear that. I want to applaud you also for taking that posture in how you treat your employees and specifically in your pay scale. So glad to hear you doing that, and I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Freeman.
I just have one, just for kind of public awareness. How many jobs are being added when this proposal?
We're adding four jobs.
Okay.
I think our original abatement, we exceeded by far the jobs we were going to add back then, but for this year, it's primarily allowed for more warehouse space because we're really desperate for space to store product, so...
Anyone else? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we, are we planning on hearing from Ms. McCammon or Mr. King at all? No, all right. I will then open this issue up for public hearing. Is there any member of the public who would like to address council in regard to this particular item? Now is your opportunity. We just had somebody walk in, just started the public hearing in regard to the Sherlock Aluminum Edging PA 198 tax abatement. Anyone interested in speaking to council in regard to this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
If we adopt the recommendation?
Moved by Hookstraw. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Aaron Source. Any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Corbin?
Yes.
Aaron Source? Yes. Hookstraw?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Great, thank you. Item 7B, speculative PA 198 tax abatement, Electric Steel LLC, 72 West 64th Street. Mr. Van Beek.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I promise I won't give that speech again. However, this is a little bit different one, remember. It's a speculative 198, which we went through in some detail last week about talking how that is a different process and still relatively new to us here. I won't go through all of that again, but I will introduce this time Lynn McCammon and Greg King from Lake Shore Advantage. If there's questions specifically about the speculative nature in the process, Greg in particular, and Lynn can answer those. But otherwise, I'd like to introduce also Paul Hookstraw from, who is making this investment and is bringing this forward for your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hookstraw, would you please state your address for the record?
That's 6535 144th, Holland.
Great, welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for having me here and, yeah, considering our speculative tax abatements. So a little bit of history on me. I own Hookstraw Electrical Services, and about two years ago, we brought our business into Holland, and we're just west of Sherlock on 64th, and I'm here to talk about 72 West 64th. But we brought about 80 jobs into Holland a couple years ago. And when we did that, we built a building on 64th Street that had 12 acres on it. And so we're taking the back six acres here, and my partner and I in Electric Steel saw a need for really good, high-quality industrial space. There's not a lot of it here, the south side, that 64th Street corridor seemed to be growing. So we took a little bit of risk and said, hey, what would it take to put up a 39,000-square-foot building and try to attract some businesses into Holland and have it be a good investment for us? So we are well down that road, and we have three possible businesses that are interested in coming and leasing space from us, which would be 100% of the building. So I can't speak to the specifics of those businesses as far as like how many jobs they're going to bring in, but all three are manufacturing businesses, and they're working with Greg here, too, so he can maybe speak into that a little bit. So, yeah, that's why I'm here, and we're excited to have this opportunity to really pass on to our possible tenants to be able to have them get the tax abatement. So I know you guys have some, yeah, some specifics about it, so...
And he'll stay here to answer any questions as well, but I just wanted to remind you, so this is speculative, so when, tonight, we would just be establishing the building as designated as being a speculative building, and then passing a resolution that approves the speculative part of the IFT. But there is no really dollars at this point to estimate, because that comes when a tenant is actually identified and they apply. As he mentioned, there's starting to be some interest, and they're working with Lake Shore Advantage, and then those applicants will come back again, and that is when we'll see like what type of investment is being made and what type of abatement dollars we would be talking about. So with that, I'll turn to Greg to maybe talk a little bit about the interest that he's seeing in this, but we will all be available for questions.
Great, thank you, Lynn. Mr. King?
Hello. Yes, we've got three companies that are interested in this space. One is coming from Jenison, another's coming from Holland Township, and another one is coming from Zealand, I believe. So they are new businesses to the City of Holland. We are at the early stages. They have kind of made it clear that if this, you know, doesn't happen, it's really hard for them to come to this area. So they're, you know, really excited to do this. I think you're going to see, if you guys approve it, that we are going to be moving on these very quickly. I think they're looking to move in, you know, spring, springtime. Yeah, March. So we've got our work cut out for us at Lake Shore Advantage to get these in, but they're all manufacturing, they're all very excited to move in, and then they've got some great future plans for their businesses, and they definitely want to be here. So that's all I've got on those right now. I can go into a little more detail on those, but also happy to answer anything about this particular abatement.
Okay. Council, any questions for the applicant, for staff, or for Lake Shore Advantage? Dave?
Yeah, a quick question here. Each of these units, by the way, good last name, just...
Yeah, yeah, you bet, absolutely.
No relation, no.
Somewhere, maybe.
Yeah, way back. Each of the units is, do I have this correctly, a little over 7,000 square feet?
Yeah, so we designed the building, and I think the master deed is recorded with seven units. There's three of them around 7,800 square feet, and then four around 3,800, something like that. But the way it's kind of shaking out is there's going to be three businesses. One took one of the units, the 7,800, and there's two more that took about 15,000 square feet. So it's gonna, yeah, there's going to be three of the businesses taking the seven units. Yep.
I think you've hit a good niche. I think historically, there's been a shortage of space in that sort of medium area, so...
We wanted to provide a building that had some options, right? And, yeah, we just didn't really know how it was all going to shake out, so...
Yeah, Nikki.
Yes, I have a question of Lynn. And Lynn, this is the first time you've ever confused me. I thought I understood it. So each, does Mr. Hookstraw get an abatement and each of these seven prospective businesses, or just the seven businesses as they come?
Right, just the seven businesses. It's really, it's just really part of a tool that's provided by the state to really kind of attract businesses like this to our area, which obviously, it's seeming like it's effective. But he does not get any kind of benefit. Right.
Okay, that's what I thought originally. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No problem, I knew you could clear it up. And I just want to say that Paul Hookstraw grew up across the street from my husband and I and our children. So it's nice to, and I have no financial interest or any other interest in this building, just to say that. But it's nice to see that he's grown up, and, you know, he used to be a little kid, and now we're the same age.
Nikki, it is an interesting point you bring up. As the developer, we aren't eligible for any tax credits. So if this building were to sit empty, you know, we're paying the full rate, which it's, you know, it's dictated by the state, which we learned, but it is a little bit of an interesting twist on it. But so we're really hoping to be able to pass it on to our tenants. We're grateful to have some interested tenants, so...
Good, thank you. Good luck.
Mr. Corbin.
Yeah, leave it to politicians to stretch the truth just a little bit. So we can't let the two speak and not have Greg speak. So I'm going to ask Greg your question. Greg, it was mentioned that you could kind of give us an idea what these three manufacturers, these three industries are that are coming, and maybe speak to some of the jobs, the number of jobs potentially as well. It was supposed to be a Hookstraw question, but Mr. Councilman Hookstraw didn't ask it, so maybe I would.
That's all right, I can clarify. So one of them is a startup that's moving into that space that we're working with. One of them is an advanced manufacturing operation that's starting out very small that works with food processors on integrating their electrical systems. So they have a very small space, and they work in very big spaces. So they needed to scale up their options. They're looking at at least, I think, 10 employees over the next two years is our initial discussions. Another is a printing and labeling company that works for some of our largest regional customers, Spartan Nash and a couple others. And his business is growing based off of that mod, that model, and he's looking to add, I believe, another five to 10 employees over the next two years. Again, looking at the space constructions of the space, it's larger than what they've got, but they're growing very quickly. The third one is still like really early stages. I've yet to learn a little bit more about that one. But those two, I mean, we've met with them, they're ready to go, they've got, you know, the plan's already drawn up, and they want to come here, so...
Yes, Mr. Van Beek.
And I think it's a great question and learning more, but just to confirm also, a more full application would come forward, because when those individual companies come in, then we'll get all of those information, and we'll invite them to come in and share more information at that point, too.
Any other questions from council? I just had a couple of comments, because I always like to paraphrase what Mr. Van Beek has said. This is us setting the table for those, for future potential PA 198s for the individual tenants. Mr. Hookstraw, I wanted to thank you for taking the chance on building the building without, you know, you're not going to be getting any of those tax breaks, but it gives the opportunity for other businesses to be able to do that. And I also want to thank Lynn and Mr. King from Lake Shore Advantage, all of you for working together on this. It's that kind of collaboration. I wanted to really emphasize that, that it takes that kind of collaboration to make something like this work, and we really appreciate that. I think this is a great opportunity for development, and this is the first time that we've done something like this in this community. And again, shows a level of creativity and some reach to get that additional development and growth in the community. I think that's fantastic, so thank you for that. fantastic. So, thank you for that. Any other questions from anyone? Great. Thank you, all three of you.
Yeah, thank you.
At this point, I will open it up for a public hearing. Is there any member of the public who would like to address counsel in regard to the speculative PA 198 tax abatement Electric Steel LLC at 72 West 64th Street? This is your opportunity. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of counsel in regard to this item?
Move to approve the abatement as presented.
Moved by Vreeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Aaron Sors, any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Aaron Sors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Next item on our agenda, item number nine, written petitions and communications. We do not actually have any this evening, but I'd like to take this opportunity to point out to the members of the public that if you're not able to attend a city council meeting to address us during our open public comment period at each one of our meetings, we do have a special email address where you can email the entire council. We review those emails in between our regular meetings and then accept them into the record at our regular meetings. We don't read them out loud, but we do take them into the record. And that email address is publiccomment@cityofholland.com. So, if you have something that you'd like to address to counsel, that is the place to do it, publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Next item on the agenda, item 12E 4.1, financial audit for fiscal year 2021. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, mayor and counsel. And momentarily, we'll introduce staff and our auditor to come forward. But to set the stage for this a little bit, I always love to emphasize when we do this presentation annually, the importance of this process. And we had an audit committee earlier today and there were even, you know, some appropriate jokes around the table about how, how much everyone loves auditors. And sometimes, it's a lot of information, right? And it might be confusing and all those types of things. But I'd like to remind all the governing bodies that I've ever worked with and for that quite frankly, the audit process is probably one of the very top things that you're responsible for. And I emphasize that through a bad story that I'm aware of in a not-to-be-named community, where they had audits over the course of several years that accurately pointed out that there were some emerging problems and some trends going in some difficult financial directions. And surprisingly, and I'm not even sure how legally, but those audits were not made available to, or at least very transparent and were not made part of a presentation to the governing body. And I think what you're going to find out tonight is that we have a very clean audit and we have a very well put together and good story to present in our audit. But I always like to highlight that kind of no, you know, no news is, is really good news in this, in particular, in one of those instances. I'd like to especially thank staff, too, because this is just another one of those things where it just seems like, hey, this is just like, oh yeah, this gets done. But the amount of time in preparing for the audit and conducting the audit and obviously cooperating with the auditor that comes in is massive. And both staff at the Holland Board of Public Works, but also at the city, have done a fantastic job. On our side, we certainly want to recognize Lynn McCammon. But Lynn would tell you that Michelle Price is the one that really takes lead on this and has done a fantastic job as before. So, I don't want to miss the opportunity to say those thank yous. But Lynn obviously is here and then more importantly, Paul Matts from Raymond is here. And we'll go through and make a more abbreviated presentation other than what happened in the audit committee this afternoon, Mr. Mayor. So, thank you. And Lynn, you're going to start us off? Thank you.
I just want to say a couple of words. I want to second the thank you to the staff. But I do also want to acknowledge the efforts of our auditing firm. I actually was an auditor. So, I can tell you, I'm very pleased with this firm. They've got a great resource of technical support for the city and just the overall audit process, they were very easy to work with. And for that, we are quite thankful. So, before I turn it over, I think you all know how excited I am about the budget, but this is a close second. So, this does have a lot of really interesting information. Paul is going to go over some of the highlights, but if you ever have any questions, I'd be happy to point to some areas to look at and walk you through some other interesting information. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Paul Matts with Raymond and Associates. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. And, you know, I did want to share from Raymond's perspective as well, our appreciation also, both to this counsel for allowing us to serve as the city's auditors and, and most especially to staff and Lynn and Michelle. You may not be surprised to know that the audit's not a particularly fun process for our group to go to. I know, surprise, surprise. But I think we, I think we form a really good team, working well with each other. Staff is tremendously responsive with requests, very courteous. We very much appreciate that. It helps the audit to run smoothly. We did conduct the audit entirely remotely again this year, just given the current environment. That adds its own set of challenges. And again, city staff was, you know, tremendously helpful in forwarding us information electronically to be able to complete the audit. So, it really went very smooth from our perspective. So, I'm just going to share a couple of items within the financial statements, give you a quick overview of the audit process, and then I'm happy to answer questions anyone may have. So, really, our goal as part of the audit is to make sure that your financial statements are accurately stated. We want them to be useful for this group, for your decision-making processes. So, as part of the audit, we look at many transactions that take place during the year, certainly focusing on the balances at the end of the year, with an ultimate goal to issue an opinion on the financial statements as far as whether we believe those are accurately stated. We also look at the system of internal controls, the who's doing what, are there segregation of duties, reviews taking place. But if we would identify any concerns in that area, we would have to share those types of concerns as part of, part of the audit documentation as well. There were no segregation of duties, review-type concerns that we had as part of the audit this year. So, with that, there's just a couple of pages I was hoping to refer you to in the financial statements, if you have a copy of them in front of you. And the first is, is on page nine is where it begins. Starting on page nine and going through page 21 is called a transmittal letter. And I think this is something that I like to especially point out to this group because I think it, it provides a lot of value to go along with the financial statements. You know, much of the financial statements are just the numbers, page after page of numbers. But this transmittal letter provides some information on who is the city of Holland. There's, starting on page 17, there's some information on awards that the city received during the year. Starting on page 18 and going a couple of pages, there's discussion on significant initiatives, events, and accomplishments. So, I just, it's your chance to tell your story and I think it really does that well, going behind the numbers a little bit and talking about what was accomplished with the use of the funds during the year. So, that's one section that I, that I always recommend a group to spend some time reviewing. A couple pages after that concludes, starting on page 27 is the independent auditor's report. And this is where, of course, it takes us three pages to say it with all of the technical required language. But this is where we in fact issue that opinion on the financial statements. And you can see that specifically near the top of page 28, there's a section called opinions. And what we have issued here is the clean, unmodified opinion, which is the opinion you want to achieve during the audit process. We can't give a better opinion or a higher opinion than this clean audit opinion that yes, we believe that these financial statements are accurately stated. Immediately after that report is, starting on page 32, there's a section called the management's discussion and analysis. Yeah, the financial statements seem like they grow by a few pages every year. I think we're up to 263 pages this year. I understand that's a lot of information to digest. But what I, what I like about this section is it's just a handful of pages that provide a high-level summary of the results for the year. And there's comparative information to 2020 as well. So, you can see maybe how there's fluctuations and trends between years. Management provides a lot of narrative as far as maybe why activity changed between years, some, some new activity during 2021. There's budget to actual discussion, which I think, and that can be helpful when there are changes between original and final budget, and then comparing final budget to actual amounts. There's some charts and some graphs. There's a discussion near the end on economic factors and looking forward at next year's budget. So, it just kind of provides a good high-level summary of the past couple of years, but looking forward as well. On page 50 of the financial statements, I would be remiss if I didn't hit at least a couple of pages with nothing but numbers on them. Page 20, 50 of the financial statements is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances. That's really just the fancy way of saying the income statement for the year, showing the revenues and the expenses. And you can see that first column for the general fund, the third line from the bottom showed a current year increase in fund balance of $1,955,090, bringing the ending fund balance to $7,46,146. What's important to note in that, just to make you aware, is, is that does include the amount set aside for budget stabilization. So, that is included in that total. And the budget stabilization piece is about 1.6 million at the end of the year. There is a page later on in the financial statements with separate columns for the two different funds, if you're interested in seeing that detail by fund. And then, the other financial statement page I wanted to just mention briefly was on page 52, where it again focuses on the general fund, but the budget to actual information. There's a column with the originally passed budget for the year, the final amended budget, those actual results we just touched on, and then how the actual results compared to the final budget. And really, what I just wanted to mention here is you can see on the third line from the bottom of the page, there was a positive variance from the final amended budget of approximately $905,000 for the year, primarily just within expenditures that came in under budget. Lot of information here. We did certainly go over it in more detail in the audit committee. I thought I would spare you the hour to three-hour version this evening. But if there's anything I didn't touch on you would like me to address, or if there's questions I can answer, I would be very pleased to do so.
Any questions from council members? Yes, Mr. Hookstra?
Just one suggestion. First of all, appreciate all of the work that all of you have done on this. I'm not a numbers person. So, to get this sort of accumulation of them in one spot is, it's mind-blowing frankly. But I know there's rhyme and reason to it and I appreciate anyone who can manipulate that and, and still not go crazy. My only suggestion is, I think you guys got to sit down sometime over a few beers or whatever and come up with a better description than clean. You know, I mean, if that's the ultimate, I'd have a little more business hazard or something. You know, just a suggestion. You can disregard if you like. Anyway, thanks for all of your effort.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Ask about expenditures that came in under budget. So, that's why it's not in the parentheses. We're more in a positive column on page 52.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of your question.
Page 52.
Yes.
The net changes in fund balance. We went from the original budget to the actual final budget. But we're more in a positive column because you, you mentioned because expenditures came in under budget?
Yeah, so the budget as it was originally passed for the year projected a small reduction in fund balance of that $47,900. The final budget with all amendments passed projected an increase of that $1,050,000. The actual was the $1,955,000, which led to the $904,000 favorable variance compared to the final budget. And, and if you look up a few rows from there, you can see the total expenditure line has a negative $807,092. That is most of the $904,000 total. And yes, that is the amount that the expenditures were under budget.
And is that due to things you were?
So, actually, I'm just going to elaborate a little bit more on that. So, if you look at the original budget and you see that we were originally planning on having a deficit, you may recall, so when we started, we were on, in the midst of COVID, right? So, we didn't know if we were going to get any funding. And in fact, in the year that ended in 2020, the state had not given us one of our revenue sharing payments. But then, what they did is they replaced that in 2021 with some of the CARES Act funding. And so, that is really from, when you're looking at that negative 47 where we thought we would end up, to the million surplus in our budget amendment, that is really the driver of, which is, I think, is significant. But then, when we look at, as Paul mentioned, the expenditures coming in, a lot of that times, a lot of those do end up being because, you know, you plan, but then with trying to find somebody to do the work or trying to get everything in by that deadline of June 30th, that doesn't always happen. And then, we always estimate our expenses a little bit. We want to be conservative and overestimate our expenses and underestimate our revenues, just so we never get caught in that bad place, right? So, it's pretty consistent what we see year to year that we usually come under budget on expenditures. So, probably more information you want, but thought it might just kind of put that. But those are good questions because, but that's the big picture of what I think drives those numbers.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yes, Scott?
So, all of our federal awards are on page two. I assume they're all on page two of this, this separate document. I didn't see, you mentioned the CARES dollars, but the ARPA funds that we're ready to receive, were those encumbered in this audit?
Do you mind if I take this? Okay, so, so the ARPA funds we got, and so, they actually show up. Do you have the page number of that?
I was just finding.
So, it's, it's an accounting thing. We got the cash, but, so you can't recognize the revenue until we actually have identified what we're going to expend it on. And that's why it does not show up in that single audit either. We, it's a federal guideline auditing standard. So, that gets on that schedule that you're referring to and is subject to an audit, that's especially just for like grant awards, when we spend the money. So, if we spend that money just in 2023, then we'll definitely have to have that audit in 2023. But any year you, you expend more than $750,000 in federal grants, you have to have this single audit. And that's what that document is. So, the way the, for, the four million that we did get, it shows up in something called a deferred revenue. So, you'll see it, it's, I know, very, one of those accounting terms. But on page?
153.
153. You'll see there's a $4 million.
It's in cash and pooled investments and then it's in unearned revenue.
Right. So, the unearned revenues is where that shows up. So, it's, it's, it's sitting out there waiting for us to, you know, we're just holding it right now till we determine.
So, on page 51, where we talk about net, our net position at 10, 10.5, that's not reflected in that number. It's deferred and it's reflected in a different number, correct?
Right. So, it has not hit our revenues and expenses yet, right? It's just kind of on the balance sheet.
Thank you.
Yep. Good question, too.
Anyone else? I, I did have the pleasure of attending the audit meeting today. And on days like today, I thank the Lord for people like you, who are, who are willing to do this work and are so good at doing this work. Because as Mr. Van Beek said, this is one of the most important tools that we have, this and the budget, knowing where we are. Because the only way we can make good, informed decisions is with this information. And Lord help us all, if I were the one who had to put all of this information together. And Mr. Matts, you do a great job with an audit report. So, thank you, thank you for that, making it understandable even for, for someone like me. This is, it is actually fascinating reading as you, as you dig into more of the numbers. I'm, I'm not going to admit to reading the whole thing, but I did dig into, into more of it there. but I did dig into more of it there, and there's phenomenal information for us in terms of where we've been, where we are, and where we can go. And when we have to make those decisions moving forward about where we can go, this is one of the best tools that we have for that.
If I may, just plug one more thing.
Certainly.
So if you recall, when we did the budget process, we incorporated the new budget and brief in there, and that's what you got on April first, and it was a condensed way of looking at the thick budget. So we are going to be, what, I'm sorry. The budget brief, well, no, that one doesn't get a special award, but in the auditing field, we're going to be putting together, we actually have the first draft, we're just polishing it up, something called a popular annual financial report, which is kind of the sister report to the budget and brief, and that one we will submit for an award. But it's going to be like a ten-page or less summary, and we get to include things that are not just the numbers, but the numbers, but we want to make sure all of our stakeholders see in an easy-to-understand format the true financial picture of the city. So that's what we're going to try to achieve with that, so look forward to that in the coming month.
That's wonderful, and we all have a hard copy of this, but this is available on the city's website as well in electronic form, so you don't have to cart this thing. It weighs about five pounds. You can get it at home, read it at your leisure. Probably, I'm assuming that it's searchable as well, but it's fantastic information. And thank you for doing the smaller versions of this as well, the budget and brief, and I can't remember what the name of the new one's coming, the sister one. Those are going to be incredibly valuable tools for us as well, so thank you all.
Thanks.
And with this, we need to take, we need to take action on this item. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the financial audit for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one?
Move we accept the financial audit. Does it have an official financial audit for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one?
It's moved by Aaron's Horst. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Hookstra. Any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Corbin? Aaron's Horst?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Item twelve E four-point-two, establishment of a neighborhood enterprise zone for a proposed mixed-use development at six-six-seven Hastings Avenue. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, and we're going to tag-team on this. So I'm going to say, Lynn, why don't you come on up, and between the two of you, we will give you the rundown of reminding you the history that we've had on this and where we're at tonight and what yet would need to be done in order to fully put this in place. So the map in front of you and on the screens outlines the parcels that we had recommended and that has been in front of you for conversation before and has also been in front of you in a public hearing before. And what we're trying to do in this is create a new neighborhood enterprise zone district. And kind of like the P H one-ninety-eights that we talked about earlier, those one-ninety-eights actually have to be in a district before you can adopt the actual certificate. This is kind of a similar process where what you would be taking action on tonight, as staff recommends, is to fully establish this as a new neighborhood enterprise zone. Now you might ask, why are we recommending that you're establishing a neighborhood enterprise zone? It's because over the last several years, we've been having discussions, and Ryan Kilpatrick has been in front of you both with his Housing Next hat, but also with his City Economic Development hat on, and talking about what things can we do to try to play our portion of the role in addressing affordable housing issues. And the old Goog's property, because that's what this is, and we know that Hollanders remember what Goog's is or was, right? Is the property in question here, and what happened is that that building was taken down, but you will see that a wonderful new building is taking its place. And in it, in the upper floors, there are several units there, and this neighborhood enterprise zone is being created around it. It had to have a certain number of parcels in it. And should you approve this zone, then that particular project at a later date and a specific certificate that would come in, and by the way, that would be a one-step process. It wouldn't be a public hearing and then action. But then that could be approved for a neighborhood enterprise zone, which provides it a form of an abatement. But in exchange, Dave, kind of your discussion about what does the city and what does the community get back, is that we get lowered and more affordable housing units within that project. So that's kind of a broad overview. Lynn will correct me anywhere that I got something wrong or fill in any specifics. And the step in the process that you are right now is you're kind of in, you're in the middle and about to turn the corner and get all the way home, where if you would approve this tonight, the zone would be intact. And then assuming that, then the project could come forward and they could apply for the certificate, and that'd be paired up probably pretty close when the project would be completed, and then people could start living there. Lynn, what did I miss?
Nothing, but the only thing I was going to add, the only I was going to add is from the financial part of you, there is, much like the speculative I F T we looked at today, this is similar in that there's no financial thing that is transacting or we're not having an abatement approved. That will all be a part of when they come back for the certificate, and at that point, we'll get another look at being able to dig into the, more of the financial impact, because right now there is no, there's nothing regarding that. So we're just doing the zone, and then later we'll see the certificate, which is where we would be giving a dollar worth of abatement, so to speak.
Any questions for staff? Yes, Scott?
So enlighten me, let me get the bottom-left corner there, that large parcel. That was, I believe it was commercial, we rezoned that mixed-use when I was on the planning commission for a building that was supposed to belong, retail to bottom apartments to the bollards. By us rezoning that property, I mean, does this neighborhood enterprise zone affect the property owners, any of these property owners from doing what they currently do with their properties?
No, so with the public hearing, part of it was to notify everyone so they had the ability to come in and make comment on what was proposed, and we already got through that step. The reason that we've delayed at this point is because there is a notification of all the other taxing units before we could take this step that we're proposing tonight, and we're past that stage now. So Scott, no, I don't think that negatively impacts that parcel, and in fact, who knows, right? But there has been discussions where potentially something could actually go in that zone, where if they had an element along that included some form of housing, that this might actually be a tool then that they could take advantage of also on that parcel to give back, if you would, in the exchange to the city, some form or some level of affordable housing in the development there. And I don't want to like say, hey, that's happening or that's in the works or something, but that would be a possibility, and that was some of the rationale of why we included some of the parcels that we did in this proposed district.
So what I'm hearing is it provides more opportunity for these properties to do different things, but not less. It's not restricting them anymore. Okay, and then the last question I have is the top middle property there, it's got the orange line going down through there. Is that, what's that delineate? I couldn't figure out what that delineation, that line was for. If that was separating that parcel in two?
I'm not even sure what that, that might just been something else, a layer in the G I S that that orange line went in there. I'm not exactly sure what that denotes, Scott. I apologize.
Any other questions from council members? Yes, Dave.
There are a couple of questions alone, and I'm drawing on some mothballed information here, so you need to help me. But first of all, the length of the enterprise zone proposed is eight years, is that right?
Correct.
And that seems to be kind of a short period. Often there are longer periods of time, aren't they?
They're very, they're very in length, and this one was, so Ryan Kilpatrick helped us evaluate the appropriate term, and so this one was evaluated based on the conditions that they were to be proposed for eight. It can go up to, I want to say, eleven years, but this one, so we don't, so, and eight is consistent with what some of the other ones we've approved in the city.
And is there a phase in at the end of the period, like the last couple of years, where?
There is a phase in in the last couple of years where it's right, not at the full, right? I think it's the last three years.
Yeah, if you would help me and maybe some others too, with an enterprise zone, the tax rate is frozen where? Or is it eliminated or?
No, it's frozen. The value is frozen, right.
At like half value or at the current value? How's that work?
So to some extent, we could kind of try to remember that, Dave, and we can get that to you, but most specifically, this step just creates the zone. Nothing would happen, so we'll be more thorough and have better answers for you on that. When the, when assuming an actual project comes forward, that's when we'll do all the financial analysis and actually have something that would be approved, where you see not only kind of the, what the abatement would be, but also kind of what the value coming back would be.
Would that potentially change with each property or?
So actually, I will fill in because I do know the answer.
Okay, great.
So what the answer is, is that, and this is what you're probably remembering, is it's a one-half of a state average. So we get the amount, we actually get the millage we're allowed to use from the state, and that changes every year, so that, but the value when you get it, approve an N E Z certificate, comes from the state, and that's, but it's a one-half the state average, and that's where you're getting the one-half. So, but then essentially the state gives us the millage that we can apply for the N E Zs.
Yeah, I have numbers rolling around when we were considering the baker lofts and so forth.
Yep.
Yep.
Good memory.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so good on the one-half, yes.
Any other questions from council members? Do you have your mic on? Can you get your mic on? Or speak into it, one of the two.
But it's just quite a process. I mean, I'm impressed, not necessarily in a positive way, but that there are a lot of stuff to this.
Right, so as you saw tonight, we saw a couple of different economic development tools that are available through the state, but each one has its little nuances, and so that's why when, if we hesitate to answer, we're just really trying to make sure we've got the right one, because they all have a little bit different stuff, but it's good for the city overall, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Great, thank you. No public hearing on this one. What is the public, or what is the public, what is the council's preference in regard to this item?
If we adopt the resolution.
Moved by Hookstra. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Raymond. Any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Raymond?
Yes.
Vreman?
Yes.
Corbin? Aaron's Horst?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Next, item twelve E six-point-one, gifts. Kathy, would you please review the gifts for us?
The city manager's office is pleased to report the following gifts. Public Safety Services Police Operations, Community Policing Donation Fund, anonymous source, ten thousand dollars. Public Safety Services Police Operations and Kind Donation, Mark Capel, General Manager of Grand Rapids Auto Auction. GPS K-nine tracking dog collars valued at two thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-six cents. Parks and Recreation, Sal Perez Scholarship Program, cash receipts, reporting dates November one through the twenty-eighth, seventy-five dollars. Parks and Recreation Tree Program, Harold Butch Tannis, one hundred dollars. Human Relations Department, Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, Vietnam Veterans of America, chapter number seventy-three, three hundred dollars. Daughters of the American Revolution, Elizabeth Schuler Hamilton, chapter, three hundred dollars. It is recommended that these donations be accepted with appreciation, credited to the appropriate account, and an expression of gratitude be forwarded to said donors.
Thank you, Kathy. What is the council's pleasure in regard to the gifts?
Move to accept those gifts?
Moved by Vreman. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Aaron's Horst. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item twelve E six-point-two, Human Resources Finance Department Grant Manager, Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, and I'm gonna hope that the mayor allows me just to go back a second and just recognize in particular, it's not always that you get a ten-thousand-dollar gift. And just if you want more information, I think you all know Chief Messer sitting behind me and our men and women that work in the police department or particularly community policing. They don't like to kind of display these stories very well, but I hear more of them. Once in a great while, I might kind of share it in my Friday communication, but more often than not, it's just, this, that fund is something that's made available so that when the officers are out in the community and come across something, they can draw upon this fund and help the people of our community when there's a need. And it could be, you know, they responded to a fire, and there's a family that's out Christmas presents. It could be so, you know, a domestic that occurred, and someone's left in a perilous position. There's just great stories that happen pretty much every week and probably even more than that that I'm not aware of. So huge appreciation and thank you to this anonymous donor. But really, that's met in so many other ways by other donors from the community that allows our department to meet people where they're at in the community. It says a lot.
Well said. Thank you.
Okay, sorry, I will move on. Human Resources. So this is something that's a little bit outside of the norm. And a couple of things. One, Jennifer Orm agrees with me that typically we do not bring new positions to you outside of the budget process, because we just don't think that's best practice or process, because I think it's best to take a look at new ads as part of the full budget review process. This is one of those examples, though, where it didn't take us much to say, hey, this is something that we want to take advantage of sooner rather than later. So a few things with this. This is a position that is within the city's structure, and as outlined there, is going to report to the city finance director, and I'll explain why we think that's the right location for it in a moment. But this is also very clearly a partnership with our Holland Board of Public Works, where the full costing of this position is going to be split fifty-fifty between the city and the B P W, and then the resources thus are also available to both organizations. The reason that we're doing this is because you've probably heard bits and pieces with federal and by extension state, there's lots of grant opportunities and monies that are already and are increasingly become, going to become available. You might say, well, we have staff, so apply for those funds. And the reality is that I'm just going to tell you, our staff already is already stretched to the limits and running very hard, just keeping up with what we do in most normal days and all of the additional stuff that seems to be happening in this community right now. The vast majority that is very positive, but we're stretched. We just are. So just throwing something and say, hey, I heard that there's money out there, but I don't know a lot about it. So will you investigate that and apply for it? And that's only part of, part of the trick bag here. We definitely want to have one-point coordinated person that it's their job to systematically take a look at all the funds that are available, understand them well, prioritize them, and target which ones we think align with your strategic priorities and our business plan to go after those funds that are most fitting for our situation. I also want to stress that just because we have this grant manager position- I also want to stress that just because we have this grant manager position, that there is a good possibility that this person isn't the only one that's going to write the grants. There are a lot of grants sometimes that the best thing to do is have this grant manager manage and go after and maybe expend more monies to have a specific type of grant manager or firm write for a very specific grant. So I want to say that right off the front that we might actually recommend or choose to have more funds that this person then would be managing and going after to apply for funding. But a huge thing with this, especially with the federal funds, and you've heard me say it before, and I'm sorry to say that it hasn't changed since last time, just about all of this federal funding yet, and by extension, the funding that the state is holding that is still, applies to those funds. And the ARPA funding that we talked about earlier that we already have is still under this wonderful interim final guidance. And I won't spend too much time on that, but you just got to say that a few times and let it roll around in your head and understand. That's a scary term because they could change the rules. And I know from personal experience that they do. And if you don't do something right, potentially you could have spent a good chunk of money on something and they said, oh, we changed the rules and now you can't use that money that way, so you got to give that money back. So we are going to be prudent in this. But a large responsibility of this grant manager is not just getting the money upfront and then saying, woo-hoo, that was great, let's celebrate. Because the reality is that the reporting and managing of that money when you get it is quite frankly, way more work than applying to and receiving the money. Not all free money is free, let's just put it that way. So we feel very much so that this is a position that really is critical to position the city and the BPW to try to take best advantage of the monies that are out there. And not even trying to get into if the money should be out there or anything. If there's monies out there, we are going to compete for those monies and we're going to get our, at least if not more than our fair share by doing something which I think is really smart here and position, while positioning ourselves to go after that. I covered a lot of this, but Jen is the person that takes care of all the wonderful details and has done the job creation, posting, will, would advertise for this, should you approve it, has taken a look at like the wage scales and all those types of things. And ultimately, should you approve it, I'm sure we'll do a great job of, of attracting the right person to the city. And then I think I covered just reporting back. All of that describes why we think reporting to Lynn in the, in the finance department is the right place for this position to fit.
Excellent, thank you.
There's a lot there, but.
There is. Any? All right.
They hate it when I do this, so.
She's, and she's been waiting patiently for the last hour and a half. Any questions from council?
Yeah, just one. So let's say we approve it and so we're paying, we hire someone and pay them 70,000 a year. And with all the time and effort it takes to get these grants, these grants must be worth a lot of money. I mean, to invest this much, we're not talking, I mean, what are these grants worth that we're investing all this money and time in it? Do we know and are they constant? Are they all year long? I don't know much about grants.
Yeah, sure. Great question, Nikki. So I would say we have been having a little bit of a debate even before COVID and by extension, the Build Back Better program and ARP money and all of that. Where there's, there, I think we felt that potentially there was enough grant money in the world available that this might be a worthwhile position. And in the most simple form, if a grant manager could go out and get annually more money than what the cost of their position are, you would say, well, that's a good ROI, let's do that, right? Now, we'd expect more. What's changed and why we're bringing this to you outside of the budget cycle is because with all of these federal projects that are being talked about, and quite frankly, at the state level, literally billions of dollars that they have in their ARP allocation, because there were, we have some, the county has some, but then the state really has some. They are still working through and it's still contingent upon that interim final guidance thing, right? But there's literally billions of dollars out there. And to us, that really makes it a really simple recommendation to all of you to say, now's the time to get this in place. Because we really want to be strategic and aggressive in picking what we want to go after as far as grant funds.
That makes sense, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, just very, very quickly, I think this is a very smart move, especially in the climate as you've spoken about these days. It's really to our benefit to have someone focus on getting those grants. Staff has done a great job, I think, in the past. And he's brought a number of things to us and it's great when they have the time to find those things, but to have someone actually focus on it and, and tune into that. I'm off for it.
Scott?
Yeah, so I worked with grants my whole career here and especially near and now in county the past 18 years. And I can tell you, I, I, I watch my grants and how much revenue I receive from it. I'm about 12 times what my salary that's been spent 18 years, 12 times that it's been returned back to the county in grants. So it tells you a little bit about, and I still have to do my job. And eventually, last few years, we have a grants coordinator now that's really helped us. So, and, and the other part of that, and you alluded to it, is the audits. The audits are crazy of all the equipment, where's it at, you know, life expectancy and, you know, depreciation and then also just the quarter of the reporting, you mentioned it. It's just an enormous task and I can see where it drive, draws away from your resources that this makes sense. This makes sense for the city, it really does. What I will say is, most of these grants allow for what, a 5% M and A? So if we could build, you know, 5% M and A cost to each of these grants, you may actually pay for the position over time with the number of grants that we have. So I, I, I think this is a no-brainer for the city. This is a huge, just in the last probably year, I've, I've been applying for $8 million worth of grant dollars at the county level. So, I mean, it's definitely, there's a lot of great programs out there that we are not taking advantage of that we should. So I, I'm very supportive of this idea and I would say, let's, let's go for it. It really makes sense. Thank you.
And, and Scott, just for those of us who haven't been writing grants for our, our whole careers, M and A is, is management and administrative fees, did I get that right? Okay, good. I wanted to, no, I, I tried to figure it out while you were saying it. I think I caught it, I just wanted to confirm that. And, and I agree with you exactly and, and with what the city manager was saying. The money's out there. You know, regardless of how it got there, how you may feel about whether it's out there or not, it's out there. And we might as well get as many of those dollars back into this community as we possibly can. This seems like an incredibly smart decision to make. Our staff is already incredibly busy doing the day-to-day things that they need to do to keep the city running smoothly. If we've got an opportunity to be able to get more, more funding in here and, and pay for that through M and A. And, and or, you know, as you said, eight, eight times, did you say? Almost 12 times. And for, for Scott alone, that, that makes, that makes, yeah, I know, we're setting the bar pretty high for you, I know that we are. But I think that makes, that makes incredible sense. So with that, what is the pleasure of council in regard to item 12E 6.2, Human Resources Finance Department? The new position of grant manager?
Move to approve that.
Move by Vreeman, is there support? Support by Hookstra, any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Vreeman?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Ernst Horst?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Item number 13, communications from the city manager, Mr. Van Beek.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, and thank you for that last action especially. We're excited about that. Give us some time to get the person and all those types of, but Scott really laid down the gauntlet there 12, 12 to one, so. Yeah, we'll see. I, I think I heard six to one maybe is, is what I heard. Several announcements tonight. First, and you will receive this in your Friday communication also. My goodness, it's December and it's almost going to be January already. So Coffee with Council is right around the corner and CINCA and staff and our communications are putting that information out. You will have this information and also this flyer and a PDF in your packet on Friday. And we will also be pushing this out pretty aggressively into the community to make sure that the community knows that Coffee with Council is coming up. Now, for those of you that might say, what Coffee with Council like, what's that all about? Just, I like to always remind, because we use some sayings that are all pretty normal for us, right? But I suppose you could have Coffee with Council whenever you wanted. But this is particularly the opportunity that starts with the community and kicks off strategic planning that ultimately leads to the handoff to staff to do both budget, budget planning, but business planning. And then it gets back to you ultimately in a strategic and business plan and a budget that you hopefully will adopt later in the spring. These are two dates where the community can basically come forward and have communications with all of you. Last year, because we, where COVID interrupted, we also had a specific web email address. And we'll also be publishing that, and I think that's simply coffeewithcouncil@cityofholland.com. And then we'll gather all of those comments and make those available to you also.
Question, will the, the Holland, Michigan logo coffee cups be available at the Coffee with Council? Those are, I like those a lot.
Those are nice, but I think that's, I think that's just graphics by CINCA.
All right, all right. We'll, we'll settle for that, I guess.
Okay. Maybe we'll write a grant, grant for those coffee cups. So that's one. Second is this is, as we're about to transition, this is the last meeting for you all of 2021. Which I think is worthy of just taking a moment and acknowledging that. And certainly personally, from my perspective and speaking for all of staff and your employees, it's, it's been quite a year. In so many different ways and I am, I tend to, or at least try to be a very positive. So I'm only going to accentuate the positives, which is what an amazing amount of stuff that has been accomplished in this year. And that definitely is a reflection on all of you, certainly as our leaders. But hopefully on all of our staff that also has accomplished some pretty amazing things in some pretty difficult circumstances. And in a moment, so thank you. And this is that last meeting. And, you know, putting this graphic up here says, store up your energy because January always comes roaring in like a lion and there's a lot of work and it's a, it's some pretty heavy lifting quite often in January. And quite frankly, staff is already very focused on that. In fact, the videos that we did last year that seemed to be a hit, most of them have already been recorded and are being edited and will be ready for all of you this, the first study session in January. There's been a lot of legislative activity here just in the last few days. And quite frankly, I haven't, I've kept up with it and provided Michigan Municipal League some information on large economic development funding that's been made available at the state, which is very positive. And yet, some changes to kind of personal property tax that is potentially a little problematic that we're looking at. In general, one of the things that we always like to talk about is if the state makes changes, writing a check, it's appropriate, we, we think that the state should be the one that signs and endorses the bottom of the check. And yet unfortunately, the state has this habit of writing the check, but the ones that have to sign it at the bottom with no say in it are the local units. And that's one of these changes that has been really started and apparently ended all in the last two days at the legislature, so we're watching that. I'll try to share more information about that, there's still some analysis. It sounds like that the state has said, hey, we're not going to let that happen, we'll cover the first year cost of a change in the personal property tax. But I'm always skeptical with that when they say, well, we'll cover the first year cost, but then in the future, that's just going to impact us. And we've run some numbers and we think that this change potentially is just in the city coffers, well in the six figures. So as we've talked about tonight, right, I don't, I think we're partners in good economic development policy and taxing policy, but we like to have a say in it and this is one of those examples where it didn't exactly happen. So I'll try to share more information with you on that. Sorry, it's, a lot of times it's very fast-moving stuff, so. The last thing that I'll say other than thank you is because it's kind of the transition of the year, our video team is pretty prolific, Emmy award-winning and all the like. And you, just like last year, are going to be the first ones to see right now the end of the year video. So let's test my technical abilities a second and see if I can get this to play. I know the pressure's on.
Will that be available for sharing soon?
You will see it shortly. Broadly broadcast over all of our media networks.
And that's all you have? Wonderful, thank you. Next item, appointments and communications from the mayor. I have a number of appointments and the, the first.
I have a number of appointments, and the, the first is the 2021 to 2023 Council Liaisons, Appointments to Boards, Commissions, and Committees. It is the, near the beginning of our legislative session, we've got a two-year session here for council members, and one of the responsibilities of the mayor is to make recommendations for council liaisons to certain boards, committees, and commissions. As part of that process, I asked all of you to fill out a, a survey, and it's wonderful to take a look at all of your, what you would like to do. I try my very best to get as many of you in as many positions as you would like to, but of course, nine people and a number of different positions, not everybody can be everywhere that they want to be all of the time, so I appreciate those members of council who may be taking a second or maybe a third choice here, but I have, I'm going to run through the list as it is here so that the public has an idea of who these liaisons are to the different committee, boards, committees, and commissions. And part of that job is to facilitate communication from the council level back down to the committee, but also from the committee back up to the council. And one of the other things that I like to do with this, in addition to trying to take into account what it is that council members would like to do, but also to provide some continuity between similar types of boards, committees, and commissions, or ones where there may be some advantage in folks having some communication between those boards, committees, and commissions. So, on the Audit Committee, Mr. Peters and Mr. Byrd, Board of Appeals, Ms. Aaron Sors, I will be continuing on the Board of Public Works, Mr. Corbin on Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Mr. Vreeman on Civic Center Place Board, the Downtown Development Authority, and the Farmers Market Advisory Board, Mr. Peters on the Historic District Commission, Mr. Peters, Ms. Corbin, Mr. Corbin, sorry, Scott, and Ms. Aaron Sors on the Holland Energy Fund, Mr. Hookstra for both Human Relations and International Relations, Ms. Raymond for Makatawa Area Express Transit Authority, Materials Management Task Force, Ms. Aaron Sors, Mr. Peters and Mr. Ray, and Ms. Raymond, Neighborhood Improvement Committee, Mr. Corbin on Parks and Recreation, Ms. Raymond continuing on Planning Commission, Mr. Byrd with Ms. Raymond as alternate on the Police Community Relations Commission, Mr. Vreeman on the Principal Shopping District Board, Ms. Raymond on Public Art Advisory Committee, and then with the West Michigan Airport Authority Board, Mr. Hookstra, Mr. Corbin, and Mr. Byrd as an alternate. And I'm putting that in the form of a recommendation to city council. And what is city council's pleasure in regard to that recommendation?
We accept the recommended appointments.
Moved by Hookstra, is there support? Support by Vreeman, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And then the second, I have some additional mayoral appointments to city boards and commissions. I'm recommending that the city council accept the appointments of Kim, is it Chafi, to the Historic District Commission, term expiring on June 30, 2023, George Diaz Acosta to the International Relations Commission with a term expiring June 30, 2022, the reappointment of Brian Birch to the Holland Satellite Smart Zone LDFA Board with a term expiring December 31, 2025, and the resignations of Stefani Besteman from the Historic District Commission effective November 2, 2021, and Jane Dahlman from the International Relations Committee effective August 15, 2021. And that is in the form of a recommendation to council. And what is council's pleasure in regard to that recommendation?
We accept the mayoral applications to the different commissions.
All right. Moved by Aaron Sors, is there support?
Support.
Support by Raymond, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And again, this was, and as Mr. Van Beek said, our last meeting of the calendar year. We get a couple of weeks off before we hit the ground running in January. Hope to see everybody at Coffee with Counsel, great opportunity for the public to speak with us face to face. I hope everyone has a absolutely wonderful holiday season and enjoys a good time off with family and friends. Next item on the agenda, item number fifteen, appointments, motions, and communications from council members. Any communications from council members? Ms. Raymond?
Yeah, I have two things. First, I just got a text from Doug Zalstraw, he would like to correct the record. Bob Hamilton is retiring, not resigning. So he thought that was important to, to make, make that correction. Also, I think that over the last couple, not I think, over the last couple of meetings, we've been hearing people do public comment about homelessness in the community, and I feel a little bit compelled to add some context, especially to some of the stuff that was presented this evening. So in my day job as the Lake Shore Housing Alliance Director, I work with organizations that address the needs of people experiencing homelessness on a daily basis. And I would like to say that there are dozens of organizations who are working tirelessly to meet the needs of people experiencing homelessness. In fact, it was nothing short of miraculous overnight, literally, excuse me, literally overnight, the organization shifted gears when we had to shut down for COVID and continued the next day serving, serving people experiencing homelessness, people who were at imminent risk of losing their housing, and including people who are living unsheltered. We have a very strong street outreach program at Community Action House, there are five, it's a 5.5 FTEs, team of people who reach out to, to folks living unsheltered throughout the county, and they, so at camps, in the library, community kitchen, at Refresh Ministries at, at, at the First United Methodist Church. And, and I, part of my job is to make sure that we're looking at data, and we're, we're tracking our progress in meeting the needs of people experiencing homelessness. And I know that, you know, when I, in fact, I was talking with the street outreach team about the point-in-time count that we do at the end of January every year, while they were in Hudsonville, meeting with a couple of people who were living in their car. So they're all over the county, trying to meet the needs of folks who are living unsheltered. And in fact, they increased their, their positive housing destination rate of folks who are living unsheltered from 25% last year to 42% this year. So they're doing some great work. And, and not only, I mean, the millions of dollars that have come into the community to address the needs of folks who are losing their housing because of COVID, Good Samaritan Ministries assisted 1,200 families between April and October with 4.6 million dollars of rental assistance, to make sure that people remain housed. So there's a lot of really great stuff going on, and it's all collaborative in nature. The, the, the police department is working, we've talked about that before, the CIT has been working with the street outreach team to address the needs of folks who are homeless and facing mental health crisis. So collaboration is the name of the game for the Lake Shore Housing Alliance and the organizations that are members. And the City of Holland is a member of the Lake Shore Housing Alliance and works collaboratively. And in fact, I would imagine that you guys were, or we were, founding members of the Lake Shore Housing Alliance at some point. And, you know, what we can do as the city at this point, I mean, there may be other things that we can do, but at this point, one of the most important things we can do is ensure that there's enough affordable housing and enough, enough housing in general for, for us to be able to house folks who are, who are experiencing homelessness. The, the, the planning department gave us a report yesterday, an annual report, it's a great document, really great information, if you have a chance to take a look at it. But they reported that in 2021, we approved 217 units of affordable housing, which is really, it's great, and we need to do more of that, and we've got more in the pipeline. So there's some really, really exciting things happening. So I just felt really, I just felt like it was important to recognize the organizations that, because it, it feels like it's implied that there isn't a lot going on, and there is a lot going on, and it's, and people are doing great work. It's not to say that every need is being met and that there aren't gaps in, in services, and so we're working hard to make sure we're covering those, those gaps as well. And I would like to also point out that the Holland Sentinel is doing a big article about homelessness, and, in particular, the Holland area, but certainly will address Ottawa and Alleghen as well, the northern part of Alleghen County. So keep your eyes open for that, it should be the next couple of days, and you'll see lots of interviews and data and all kinds of information about what's happening to address the needs of folks experiencing homelessness.
Great, thank you, Lynn. Nikki?
May I ask you a question, Lynn?
Yeah.
Are, are these services, wherever they're from, this collaborative effort, is it open to everyone, anyone who might ask about?
Yeah, they, these organizations do the best they can to serve the needs of the people who show up at their doors.
Okay.
And so I, and again, there are gaps in services, but for the most part, they're doing the best they can to do that, to make sure that people are not, not, don't remain homeless.
Thank you.
Good work.
Mr. Vreeman?
I just, I have two, Mayor. Lynn, thank you so much for bringing attention to that and broadening that perspective. It's just sincerely appreciated that you've got your finger on the pulse of what's happening in our community and can, again, broaden that perspective. It's so, so appreciated, so thank you. The other is just a note of appreciation to our city manager and his dear assistant in that all of their work in bringing me in particular up to speed as a council member, and just blessings on you as you engage in two weeks, a little bit different activity, and you celebrate Christmas and the New Year with your family. Thank you for your work. It's detailed, it is thorough, and it's sincerely appreciated, and the extra work that you've had with bringing me up to speed is sincerely appreciated, so thank you.
Mr. Corbin?
Yeah, so wow, or Councilman Raymond, wow, I mean, that's a great summary of what the Lake Shore Housing Alliance, correct, is doing, and it's just wonderful news, so thank you for bringing that to our attention, and you're a great advocate for the city council to bring that forward and let people know what we are doing as a city, so thank you. I just wanted to say thank you, I'm coming to the end of my first term, starting my second term, in Holland City Council, and it's been just really rewarding, and it's been an honor to serve the City of Holland, and more importantly, to thank the, the staff. I don't do it every time you come up at the podium, and thank you for each and every program you do. I try to wait till the end of the year and say it collectively, but you guys just do an outstanding job. Without you, we could not be the city we are, and I am so proud to say that I not only live in the city, but I serve the city on Holland City Council, so thank you so much. And to those who are listening, hopefully the employees are hearing this as well, that I really appreciate all the hard work over the past four years and, and just in general the last year especially. Thank you very much.
Well said. Anyone else?
Top that. No, everybody in this room works hard, from all our notes, all our minutes, to our financial, to the police, to manager, and our attorney, of course, keeping us on the straight and narrow.
All right. I do not have any first readings of ordinances, so on this, end of this last meeting of calendar year 2021, there is just one more motion that I would entertain. Moved by Vreeman, is there support? Support by Corbin, almost thought we weren't going to get it there. Nobody wants to leave. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. We are adjourned, thank you, everyone.